This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
I am going to call this meeting to order, so we will call in Shannon.
Shannon Dunham here.
Megan.
Megan Harvey here.
Maren.
Maren Goldstein here.
Mayor LaChapelle.
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Lori.
Lori Garcia here.
Ben.
Ben Hershey here.
And Cindy Kuzensky here. Welcome to our, our school committee meeting for November 8th, voting day. I hope everybody voted. And Megan, do we have correspondence?
I have no correspondence to report.
Okay. Do we have gifts?
I have no gifts to report.
All right. This might be a really quick meeting. Mackenzie, I see Mackenzie's here. Do you want to make your report? Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. This week was a busy one. On Friday, we hosted a pep rally, which is followed by the homecoming dance on Saturday, which is a big success. Today, we had a big sale for voting day. Student council would like to thank the community for a successful day. Now we are currently planning a food drive for Thanksgiving. The donations will go to the East Hampton Community Center.
Great. I love it. Okay. Thank you. You, I don't know if you froze a little bit, but I think you completed. All right. Great. Okay. All right. So let's open this up for public comment. Who can I hear?
Dr. Lusler. I don't know if Mackenzie was trying to say something else. She came on. Did you have anything?
Yeah, I got kicked out of the meeting.
Oh, okay. Good. Then we won't open it up to the public comment. Go ahead.
Um, what did you hear? Anything?
We heard the last, sorry, the last thing I heard was the food drive for Thanksgiving.
Yeah. So the donations will go to the community center. And that's all I have. So I guess you didn't really miss much.
Good. All right. Well, thank you very much. Okay. So now we will open public comment. If you want to speak, please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes. There are very few people here tonight. Probably all out voting. I don't see anybody. I'm going to hold for like 30 seconds. All right. Well, we have a couple of people, I think, coming, so we'll give them. We are. Okay, we are asking anybody who would like to speak to do so now and signal that you would like to talk. Give it 30 seconds more. And yell at me if I don't go 30 seconds. I'm not always that accurate with time like that. All right. So we are going to close public speak and go on. Thank you. So on to the superintendent update.
Sure. So to start us off this evening, Julianne is going to give an update on the ELL focus group. And I don't know if Lori wants to jump in, but welcome Julianne Levin, our director of curriculum.
Thank you. Um, so yes, I'm, I'm, I don't have a slideshow. Thank goodness for you all. And I'm just going to give a little bit of an update about our focus group and what our plan is and what our charges for moving forward and what we hope to do next. So we met, we're trying to keep the focus group. I'm sorry, I'm gonna start at the beginning of this. This is the conversation about expanding our language learning program in the district or programming in the district. Currently, we have world languages at the high school. And of course, we have English learners across the district. And so we have three ESL teachers and two ESL paraeducators in our current language programming. We used to have a special at the middle school to sort of begin the process of introducing students to a second language. And unfortunately, we're unable to maintain that position in the budget three years ago, I think, if I'm not mistaken, two or three years ago. So we definitely have a need for language learning in the district and to expand that programming. And the surrounding districts, we've been watching go through this process of adding dual language programming to their program. So with Lori Garcia, we've been thinking about this for a few years, three years maybe, and more, maybe even more than that. And we were, we were prepared to start the focus group and start going down this road before COVID. And Lori and I had planned to visit some neighboring districts to see what their dual language programming looked like and think about what that could mean for East Hampton. So clearly COVID got in the way of all of that. And we put it on pause. During that pause time was when we were able to add more teachers and paraeducators to our ESL programming because of COVID funding. So we're sort of looking down the road, you know, what, what comes next for us? And two things are coming up. First of all, that we are going to continue paying for our expanded ESL programming with COVID money. And that's not going to last forever. So there's like that one piece of what's the vision of our program for our English learners? And then there's this other vision about what's the programming for language learning for all of the other students that we have in our district? And knowing that the data around students being exposed to another language early benefits everyone. So not necessarily, you know, dual language in the home, but many districts that adopt dual language programming, starting kindergarten. And those students who begin working on a second language that early, the, the brain science around moving forward with that kind of programming means that students do better in all subjects. So it's, it's not just about language. It's about building these neuropathways that students then can access lots of other sorts of learning. So knowing all of that and knowing the brain science and how beneficial it is to be exposed to languages. We started, you know, hatching this plan of, of dual language programming. So now, you know, where the rubber meets the road, you know, is this something that will work for East Hampton? Is it what our population specifically needs? Can we sustain it in our budget? And, you know, there, there are all of these questions. So Lori and I reattached to the idea in the spring and took a course over the summer about dual language programming specifically. And then our next step was to form a focus group. So now we're at the focus group. We have our focus group. And we have educators and parents and administrators, obviously, and Lori is a school committee member in the focus group. And we met initially to kind of get on the same page with everyone, think about, you know, what, what is it East Hampton needs? How do we gather information about what East Hampton needs? And then how do we look at other programs in the area that have built a model that perhaps we could replicate? So some of the things that came up were certainly around, you know, do we have, can we staff a program like this? What staff do we need? You know, let's make sure that we're centering the experience in East Hampton of students who already speak another language at home and not the, the push that is a valid push from white, English-speaking families to want their children to be bilingual. I mean, I certainly want my children to be bilingual. And I think that that's, you know, a really exceptional skill in the global culture that we currently exist in. So, you know, what do we want really for the students who are, you know, on our margins? But what can we do for those students that might benefit out to everyone? So we had a really deep conversation. Lori, I don't know if you want to talk more about the conversation we had, but concerns were brought up. Like, does East Hampton have the capacity for this? Do we have the commitment from the community to have this kind of programming? Or will people feel like this kind of program, the, the investment in this kind of programming, will it take away from something else that people want? Right? So the group that we had was, was really interested in, in discussing these, you know, facets of this kind of programming change. But we're all really excited about whatever evolution of language programming comes out of our focus group. So our next steps are to connect with, well, we've already connected with Amherst, with the superintendent in Amherst. They have a dual language program that we are poised to go visit. We've also connected with our colleagues in Holyoke. And there are a couple dual language programs in Holyoke. And we're going to sort of, we're, we're at the point in our process now where we're going to be learning from those programs. What did they do? What was their rollout process? You know, how did they attract staff for a dual language program? How did they fund it? And we know from our, from Amherst that there's a lot of grants involved in this kind of programming. So that's another next step for us is looking for what's the funding source that we could use to at least kickstart a program like this. And again, just always getting back to centering, is this, are we doing this for our students who are coming from multilingual households? Or are we doing this for, you know, some other influence in our, in our community? So that's where we are right now. It was a really great first meeting. And we are, we're ready to, to keep digging in and see where we are. You know, I'm aware that it's, we had a great day, by the way, in East Hampton today. I know it's, I, it's off agenda, so I apologize, but it was really lovely to see our school committee chair invited to our brand new school. But as an educator in her district, coming to do professional development in our bill, like, it was really a lovely, lovely day. We were able to have like so many regions come together and collaborate with us. And, and that's kind of what we're looking for with this too. We want to learn from the people around us who are doing these programs. And it's just, it's so great to be out of the virtual culture and back into face-to-face learning from each other. So, um, yeah, that's what we hope to continue to do with this programming and we'll see where it leads us. Yes, Lori, please. Yes, please join me.
Julianne, once again, I'd just like to thank you for working with me on this and for your support and how well you just presented this. I would like to say the way it was presented on the agenda is not the way I see it. It is not an ELL focus group, because that would be just for English language learners. This is a dual language focus group. And that's why it really isn't as important how many actual English language learners we would have per year, because we want to build this as a dual language program for both groups to be learning alongside each other. So.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, Lori, that's the like, the center of what we struggled with, I think, in that first meeting is we want to do this for all East Hampton students. And we know it can't take away from the ELL programming that we currently have. And so we, we want to make sure that we're not, um, there's a, there's like a parable around like robbing Peter to pay Paul or something.
Of course.
I don't know that one. What's, what's a translation for that? That's not Easton? Yeah. Okay. Well, you, what is it?
I don't know. You're, you're asking two Jewish women to come up with something. New Testament, so.
You had the right phrase. You had the right phrase.
Yeah, but what's it mean? Like, it means something, but I can't.
It just means you're taking from one to pay for another. That's all.
Yeah, that thing.
Right. And I understand that. And I understand about that we have special funding because of COVID to be paying for teachers. I know that one of the greatest challenges, as we delved into on our three-day workshop, was even finding teachers to be able to staff this type of program. But I'm so excited to just go to our neighboring communities and see what they have done to move forward. I also would like to highlight the, the concern that so many have about having cut the middle school program. So there really are two different issues in this city where we deal with world languages, the lack thereof. Of course, what you said about the brain development, I mean, there have been studies for years that show that for people to truly learn another language, that has to begin before the age of 10 because of the way the brain neurons develop. So that's been my focus for so many years, to get children to learn languages and support each other. So I'm excited to move forward with this. And I think that we should mention too, that there was also talk about how many people to include in this focus group. So not everyone could attend the first meeting. And I know that's, I've had emails and people have expressed interest, but we were trying to keep it to a manageable group at first while we do our research. And then we're more than happy to open it up to more people and people can, you know, consistently and constantly email and give input. I think it's important that we get input from our community. So Julianne, thank you so much.
Yes. Yeah. And my email is wide open for anyone who's interested in asking questions or being part of the process that we're in right now. And we're, we're excited to move forward and to learn from our surrounding communities, as we hope our surrounding communities learn from us about the things that we do well. So it feels really good to be back in this place of collaborating across the region to, to share best practices around, around our program. So I was very inspired by, by professional development today. And I'm feeling really good about East Hampton and how we're poised to really be doing some of the best work around.
And Lori, I do apologize. I did not catch that error, but you were right. It should have said dual language focus group. So thank you for pointing that out. Any questions? Comments?
Just curious if there's a projected timeline that you could, that your focus group talked about? Is this something that we're hoping to, you know, if everything was to fall into place and funding was able to be sought? Is this something that we might be looking at for next fall? Or is it really for more the year after if everything really falls in place?
Yeah. So it's a great question. And I'm, I'm looking at my colleague Nick, and I have no idea what to expect from budget season. So I'm like, Nick, yay, glad to have you here. Um, so it's a, it's a very slow rollout for programs like this. It's really, it starts with adding one class at the kindergarten level. And so, so it's really one teacher, but of course, one teacher who's certified in dual language. So that's still a big ask. But it is, it starts as one, and then your hope is that it ages up. So it's a, we're, we're looking at a, at a 15-year process here if we want to really be thinking about the long game. But that's what we do in education. We think about the long game. So, um, yeah, it's, it's an investment for a generation of East Hampton students. But yes, if we started, we would start, whether it's this fall or whatever fall we're in, 23 or, or beyond, however, the budget allows us to do this. And it would be one class at each grade level at a time. So most grade levels are six or five homerooms. And so we would be kind of slowly with attrition of teachers trying to sort of bring in dual language certified teachers one at a time, year after year after year for the next, yeah, like 15 years-ish. You're all in for this, right? 15 years?
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The only thing I have to say is I'm, I'm happy that the focus group has started. And I, I'm happy for the district, but I'm also happy for Lori. She's really, this has been new and dear to her heart for a long time. And it's nice to see us finally be able to bring that together. I think a lot of people will be excited. And I'm curious and excited to see where it'll go.
We can definitely talk about it in budget season in a couple of months. So. So I mean, to that end, it might be good for you all. I don't know what your timeline is of thinking of next steps. And you're talking about going on site visits, but to do an additional report back in, you know, early February or something like that would be kind of the, the latest I'd recommend if you're trying to meet any kind of FY24 budget cycle. So.
That's an excellent point. Thank you, Maren. Yeah. All right. Any other comments?
I just want to add to that, just to highlight that programs that do run like this, it's really not an extra budget item because it takes the place of another teacher. And I really stressed in that meeting that it is not my goal to lose any of our teachers right now. I don't want anyone to be saying Lori Garcia has this plan. And so that means we're going to be letting go teachers. That is not the goal. As Julianne had said, you know, with natural attrition or retirement, that's why I, it was really my dream to see this happen when we opened the new school, when there already had been, you know, natural transition setup. And because of COVID, we really couldn't do that. But it, it shouldn't cost the district more money. The only money I hear about changing is because of grants and, and different things with the COVID funding. And that's how we're paying for certain ELL teachers. But for a dual language teacher who is certified to teach elementary, that's just taking the place of a regular classroom.
Nice clarification. Thank you. Anybody else? Well, thank you both. And we will go on to the special education. Private school tuition, Dr. Lusler.
Sure. Before you pull that out though, I just wanted to do a few thank yous and some recognitions for folks. I'm trying to be more accountable for that this year, and I'm really trying to do a better job of that. So first, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for allocating cannabis funds to fully support our recent Mountain View School Community Open House. So thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council. I also wanted to announce formally to everyone, and this was an agenda item a few months back when Julianne did the MCAS results, that as a result of our significant improvement on our elementary MCAS scores, we're no longer being identified for improvement. And we're not being offered support by the Department of Elementary and Secondary any longer. While their support and consultation all throughout the pandemic was very helpful, we take pride in the efforts of our dedication and work on improving outcomes for students. And to Julianne's point just a few minutes ago, today was not just election day in East Hampton, but was also a full PD day for our staff. And we were very fortunate to host several regional PD sessions at Mountain View School, something that has not happened in the region for over four years. So it presented an opportunity for us to welcome presenters and teachers from the Western Mass area to learn and network in our beautiful new facility. So our educators took advantage of that and had a wonderful opportunity to learn and grow. And if I could just share a few thank yous. Oh, did you want to say something, Cindy?
Yeah, I did. I just want to chime in before we get going on other things. So I, 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 you all brought it up. So you brought up the open house. I want to say the open house was a momentous day. What a great occasion, a lot of fun. And again, a thank you to the mayor. But my take for that day, I was there the whole three hours. I thought it was only good to be there for a short time, but I just kept going. So everybody was happy. Everybody was thrilled, positive comments all around. So that was really, really exciting. And I did want to share, since you brought up PD today, that I had the joy of going to PD at Mountain View, which was a lot of fun. But as I'm doing that, you know, my ears are always open and I'm trying to get feedback on the building. And it was really fun to hear people from other districts walk around and use words like magical, uplifting, positive, one of the prettiest buildings they've ever seen. It just, they, they went on and on. And I noticed that when people got breaks, instead of just sitting there for their break, they were just walking around and thinking about what they would love in the future, you know, for their school. So it was really, really exciting today. The mayor, the mayor has raised her hand.
Yes, thank you, Allison and members of the school committee. I mean, the school building committee, the open house was amazing. And I'm not ignoring or walking away from my screen, but every time I put my video on, you all freeze and I have to get up. So I, I don't want to think, I, I am, I am participating. It's, it's a, I just have horrible internet in City Hall right now. So. But yes, good.
Thank you. I also wanted to recognize a few teachers this week. I wanted to start off by recognizing East Hampton High School Foreign Language Teacher Toni Mango for her work for the World Language Club Craft Fair that was held recently. This annual well-attended event raises funds to supplement the World Language Club trips. These funds have been used for student scholarships, along with paying for cultural excursions for students to enjoy. This year, if the school committee recalls, because you approved it last year, students are heading to Costa Rica. So Toni does so much with the students to help them raise funds throughout the year. So that fair was a real success. And as Mackenzie, our student rep mentioned, I also want to give a shout out to East Hampton High School Teacher Dave Beauregard, who really helps lead the student council and worked tirelessly last week with the student council. They had a really energizing spirit week last week, and they had a huge pep rally. And you can see clips of it on their Facebook page, on the EHS Eagles Facebook page. And they had a really big homecoming dance, all really successful. So kudos to Mr. Beauregard. And then I want to recognize a few teachers at Mountain View. We have a brand new teacher in fifth grade this year, Mr. Ryan Copeland, who, believe it or not, is beginning a magazine with his students. They are going to have a student magazine. So kudos to Mr. Copeland, who's only been here for about two and a half months at this point, and his students. And we can't wait to see the first issue of their magazine. I also want to give a shout out to Jody Alitalo, who's our reading specialist and our literacy coach at Mountain View. We received word last week that she is being recognized by the Reading Circuit as a trailblazer along the path to effective evidence-based practices. She was nominated because of all the work she's done to align practices with evidence of effectiveness. Just one example is her switch from word walls to sound walls. At an upcoming Facebook Live event on November 9th at 7:00 PM, the Reading Circuit will officially recognize Jody and present her with an award. They'll also give Jody an opportunity to share some of her strategies so that others can be inspired by her trailblazing work. And everyone is welcome to attend the Facebook Live event. It will be live streamed on the Reading Circuit Facebook page. And finally, I wanted to recognize three staff members from Mountain View. Counselors Heidi Bai and Jan Norman and school psychologist Christina Howard, who stepped up last week and supported our neighbors at Williston after the devastating loss of a staff member. When it comes to supporting children and adults in education, we're all partners and colleagues. And Mountain View counselors were eager to lend support and provide comfort to staff and students over at Williston. Our deepest sympathies go to the Williston community who have experienced such a great loss. So I just wanted to give those announcements. And then I wanted to just point out a letter that was shared with you in your school committee packet. And this letter went to our legislators, Dan Carey and Senator Velez. We've received news at the school district level that the Operational Services Division of the state's Executive Office of Administration and Finance has determined that Massachusetts approved special education private school tuition rates. has determined that Massachusetts-approved special education private school tuition rates should increase by fourteen percent next fiscal year. So that's a cost that's being passed on to us because we have students in private special education schools. So it will be a cost that is beyond what we can really plan for. It normally increases at a rate of two percent every year, which we build into our budget. A fourteen percent increase based on the students that we currently have in specialized private school programs would be an impact of $174,000 on our budget for next year. So without additional funding, equal to that increase, we'll have to reallocate existing funds and cut back on programming in our schools in order to come up with that funding. So it's a really hard hit. It's impacting every school district across the state. We are being asked to communicate with our legislators the dire urgency of having this rate adjusted because a fourteen percent increase is not something that school districts can take on their shoulders in one fiscal year. So that information is shared with you. And if you have the opportunity, school committee members, to advocate with the, with your area legislators, that would be greatly appreciated. So that is what I have. Yes.
Dr. Leclerc, I have that letter queued up, and I accidentally. What day was it that you sent that to us?
November seventh is the date it went out to the legislators.
Okay. And do you know the justification for why they think that a fourteen percent increase is reasonable?
My, the little knowledge that I have is that at a rate of two percent over the last several years, it has not kept up with the rate of inflation. So there's an adjustment that the executive branch is attempting to make towards inflation. And I think that other factors that are not necessarily quantifiable are the fact that these programs have great difficulty in securing staffing. So they need to, some of them are offering signing bonuses to teachers that sign on. I've heard as much as $10,000. We don't have that luxury in a public school. But these schools are doing things a little bit differently. So it's, it's a huge hit for us. I don't think they have necessarily the same pay scales that public schools do. So they're not securing highly qualified staff. So I think that there are a couple of factors that are involved with making this huge leap. But I think that unless we get some relief from the state government, this will be a really difficult budget season for every school district across the state to come up with this, this funding that we have to come up with.
I agree. Fourteen percent is just devastating. So.
I just wanted to, you know, make you aware of it. And that, you know, from a superintendent's standpoint, we're trying to push back on it as hard as we can.
Good. Mayor? Mayor?
Let's see how this goes. What's fourteen percent right now of our out-of-school tuition?
Yeah, it's 174,000.
It is 170.
Yes.
Thank you.
We were asked, every school district across the state was asked to calculate that out so that we would have that figure for transparency, so that data is being collected across the state by the Superintendent's Association, so that as an association, they can legislate at the state level.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for presenting that information to us so that we have that as we think about next year. And that you guys are also, as the superintendent committee, as you're saying, is being proactive to try to get the state to step up. There's a lot of talk about surplus and funds there. And hopefully, they will put some of that more to education. And this is a great example of why they need to do that. So thank you very much for your work on that.
Thank you.
You know, if you're going to allow that, I really am hoping that the state has a plan to, to give us a hand. Unfortunately, I'm not so sure that's something we can count on. But this is really, really devastating. And I thank you for the letter. I thought it was really, really well written. I'm trying to queue it up.
Cindy, it's in our backup, in the backup.
Thank you. That's where it is. All right, good. Yeah, there it is. Yeah. So, because I knew I read it and I knew I marked it. So thank you. Thank you, Maren. Any comments?
Just one more question. I was wondering, is there any anticipated relief in the pipeline? Anything you can sort of see coming?
Not that I'm aware of, not from the the Superintendent's Association is speaking at the state level to the governor's office, but I think it's too soon to tell with the change in government coming. So we don't know at this point.
Yes, it'll be an interesting year, for sure.
So that's for 2024.
Which is, which is next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, there's a part of me, I'm thinking this letter is so well-written. I think we just kind of use the same letter. I'd be willing to use the same letter and just change it from the school committee or even put school committee with Dr. Leclerc and have us all sign it if everybody thinks that's a good idea.
I was going to suggest that. I think that's a good idea. This is really well-written. Thanks for doing this.
Maren, Ben, Lori, Mayor. Sounds good. Okay, Lori?
It sounds good by me.
Great. And I'm happy to also send it on to other state reps outside of our system that I know personally.
I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you, Shannon and Lori.
Yep.
I think it should just go out wherever it can. Schools have to have a voice, and we have to kind of scream loud, loudly when things are about to really hurt public school. And this is, this is something that could really hurt us across the state. All right, so we'll work on, we'll work on, we'll just send adjusted. We'll ask Sue to help adjust it and add the mayor and the school committee to this letter. And we send it. All right. And then Laura, you could just, like, I have a feeling I know who you're leaning on sending it to. But you could send that to Sue, and we'll mail it out as far wide as we can. Does it sound good, everybody? Okay, awesome. Okay. Director of Business Services, that's you, Nick.
Good evening, everyone. For this month's Business Office Report, I'm just going to start with a little bit on our FY twenty-three local appropriation. Our finance subcommittee met prior to this meeting, and I'm certainly not going to steal any of Maren's thunder for later. But one of the focuses of that meeting was just discussing our budget as now that quarter one ended. So as of 9:30 22, 23.23% of our appropriation had either been spent or is encumbered. So one quarter, you're just under a quarter of spending, so you seem to be pretty much right on target there. As, you know, the months go on, I'm monitoring the budget for areas to watch. And I'm in the process of preparing transfers that I will bring to the committee at our next meeting. The reason for the transfers, it's twofold. One reason is just to clean up some budget lines that will end up being in deficit at the end of the year. You know, based on staff we hired, you know, people come and go sometimes. And what your actual staff is, you know, ends up looking like is not ever going to be what you budgeted for. So I'm going to, you know, prepare some transfers to bring to the committee, so we'll clean that up. And the other reason is I want to create some new accounts that will just allow for more accurate state reporting when it comes time for me to have to do that. So I'll certainly explain this more at the December meeting. I just wanted to put it on your radar screen. At this time, areas that I am watching are spending on utilities and as well as the overall spending picture as a whole. You know, as discussions about asking for an additional appropriation continue. My second item is an update on the FY twenty-two mask purchase reimbursement. You may remember at the September meeting, I brought up that we received a reimbursement for the, you know, any masks we purchased last year in the amount of $13,162.31, which was far beyond what we actually spent on masks for the, for the year, which, you know, that seemed to be the trend across the state from, you know, every district. So we were told by that, you know, there was a webinar, and we were told by DSE that they were working with the state legislature to see if these funds, the additional amount, could be used to buy masks this year. About a week ago, we learned that they cannot be, we were sent an email from one of the finance people up at DSE, and basically, we have to send the remaining balance back. So last year, total of $4,949.28 was spent on masks. Of that amount, $582.02 of it were bought with our local budget. So that will go to the city's general fund. There's nowhere else to put it because our FY twenty-two budget is closed. And then the additional, or the other $4,367.26 was, that was by S R one grant money. So that will be reclassified to S R two, actually, because S R one's closed. But that will then free up money in S R two, too, so that can be spent on something else. So we will at least be able to use that. The remaining $8,213.03 will have to be mailed back to DSE, unfortunately. But I just wanted to give the committee an update on that because you heard me talk about it two months ago. My third item is our FY twenty-four budget process is about to begin. I'm currently, right now, just kind of preparing a timeline, you know, for myself and, you know, for our leadership team, as well as creating documents that will be used by members of the leadership team to help build the budget. And, you know, I'm looking forward to going through that process. First time in East Hampton, and I'm looking forward to building a good budget, a collaborative budget that helps us meet the goals in our strategic plan and gives our students the best possible experience they can have. And lastly, the personnel report for October. We had six new hires across the district, a night custodian, a para educator, IT director, a health teacher slash building sub, a groundskeeper, and a second para educator. We had two separations. We had a STEAM teacher and a registered nurse resign over the course of the month, and no transfers within the month of October. In the current vacancies spot, you see there's three current vacancies. Although the para educator at the high school has since been filled. I signed the paperwork for that yesterday. So right now, we only have STEAM teacher at Mountain View and a part-time special education administrative assistant vacant. So very good compared to a lot of districts. I know I say that every month, but we barely have any vacancies. We're doing very well.
Good. We like hearing that, so keep saying it. Any questions, comments?
I just heard you say building sub, and I'm curious about that. Do we have a person who's working, like, in the building on a regular basis?
What this was, the position originally was just a .67 FTE health teacher. And it was expanded to a 1.0 FTE position. And the other .33 is just, you know, doing substitute teaching roles within the high school when needed. Dr. Leclerc could probably speak to this a little better than I, but it was done through an MOA with the EEA, and likely, it was to make the position more lucrative. It's very hard to find a .6, someone that wants to work only .67. So and there's certainly a need for subs, so it made sense.
Yes, we posted for the health position at the high school all summer long at a .67 and just could not find anyone that wanted to accept a .67 position. So we tried to think creatively about how we could find someone for that position. And so we added the substitute piece to make it a 1.0 FTE, and then we found someone.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Nick.
You're welcome.
All right, so on to subcommittee reports. Shall we start with finance?
Sure. So, yep, so finance actually just met this evening, but prior to this meeting, we did do a sort of closeout, end-of-year business analysis conversation on FY twenty-two, which is now officially closed and submitted to DSE. And, you know, as we've talked about in the past, it was definitely a hard year in terms of the budget with a higher amount of expenses than we had anticipated. And that has left us with a lot less reserve funds going into this fiscal year. And so we knew that, though, so it's not a surprise at this point. But it is certainly a part of our conversations. We take that information both into this fiscal year as well as, as we start to begin, as Nick mentioned, the planning for FY twenty-four. So those are definitely places where this will ripple effect. And we need to make sure that we stay secure in our health as a school district. And that's why things like this additional 14% budget cost that may hit us for special education tuition, private tuition, is definitely something that we have to be paying attention to. And also looking at, you know, we consolidated into our new school, and that really changed our budget from previous years into this current year. And so that's something that we're also really paying attention to, all the different pieces that fall into this new school. So there's a lot of stuff that's, that was put in place to review that kind of stuff. And we're going to be continuing to do that into this new year. But at this current time, we're looking pretty healthy within our budget. And so we're going to be continuing to move forward. So that's all I really have to report at this point, but thank you very much.
All right. Any other subcommittee reports?
I unfortunately don't have anything right now. I had mentioned to you guys that I wanted to, I'm going to actually check in with Sue now that she's back and see when she can meet with me and go over the policy book. I'm having a really hard time with it. I'm having a really hard time with it. I just want you guys to know that.
All right. Shannon, I'm, I'm more than happy to meet with you too, just so you know that, okay?
And I do have a friend that's going to help me with it as well, so thank you very much. I appreciate it, Lori.
Excellent. Okay, we have COVID protocols next. And Megan, that was your request to have that put on the agenda.
Oh, I did. I emailed Cindy and asked her if we could briefly bring this up. I just, as you all know, I'm, I work on the dashboards and so I'm immersed in this data in this world and we are not at this point at all yet, but I am seeing the potential, I think epidemiologists in general are seeing the potential for some rough patches this winter. And I thought a lot about, you know, what guidelines DSE has put forward, which are the guidelines that East Hampton is following at this point. And as we've like talked about in the past, I think they fall short in a, in a couple of ways and I think it's less dramatic than it used to be. But the biggest difference that I sort of see as I'm, you know, putting out this information every week and thinking about what an epidemiologist would advise based on the, the science and, and what it's telling us and our main agency, the CDC. And the thing that concerns me is that the CDC has some pretty clear guidelines for masking and mitigation strategies according to community levels, and I don't see that on the DSE protocols, and so also not on the East Hampton protocols. And so I, I just wondered, I wanted to bring it up during our meeting to see if the group thought it was a good idea for the COVID committee to meet and discuss and look at what those differences are. If it's just something to go straight to, if there is still a COVID committee or if it should go straight to this full group or, or what we sort of are thinking about that. The biggest difference is that the CDC recommends if Hampshire County goes to that high red zone, which would indicate a really big burden of hospitalizations in our area, the CDC recommends universal indoor masking. While we're in that, not in the yellow zone, which we have popped up into a couple of times, so I don't anticipate that it's around the corner or that it will happen often. I think because of the place that we live and our high rates of vaccination and the way the school is so well, that like I don't anticipate that this will happen often or maybe even at all, but I think it would be good to have some clarity going into potentially this like tripledemic, you know, flu, COVID, RSV. What will we do if our hospitals are, are full and what would be our trigger point for masking?
I, I like the idea of being proactive rather than reactive. So I mean, I would love to have us get together to look at the difference between the two. And I do think we could just do it with the group that we had originally been working with. And then if we want to make changes, we then obviously, I'm hoping we don't have to. I'm hoping that we are able to keep these numbers down. We get through the winter. I know the spring is going to be great, so let's just get through the winter well. But I do think it's really important that we be prepared and that we actually start to think about those things. I always like to worry about worst-case scenario and then not have to use it. And that's just my way of always trying to plan. How does anybody else feel? Lori?
Megan, I just want to say once again, I've said it so many times that I'm more than thankful that you are on this committee, that you have the role that you do, not only for our community, but when you publish what you do weekly about the dashboard, it's amazing. So I, I just leave this up to you. As I always have said, no, but I've always said that I rely on science and you are our epidemiologist, so I just think what you advise and if there is a COVID, I don't even, there isn't, is there, Dr. Leclerc? Is no COVID response anymore? There's, people have changed?
Well, we still have our COVID response team. We met once this summer. And we haven't met since then. I, I, I will say, I think informally we talk about COVID things, you know, the, now that COVID is not as prevalent in our day-to-day lives, I can have a conversation with the city health nurse and the city health director weekly, you know, I mean, I talk to them all the time. We just, we had a clinic last week at Mountain View, so I mean, we, we talk quite often about, you know, things that are going on. I, I will be sending something out to families next week that came out from the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health. I, I think that, I'll say a few things. I think that there is a degree of responsibility placed on families. And what this letter will say is steeped in common sense. If your child is not feeling well, keep your child home. You know, please get your children vaccinated, not just with COVID, but for flu and any other communicable diseases. And, you know, take proper precautions during times in the year when there's a, a lot of spread of illnesses, like don't attend large gatherings if, you know, if there's a lot of spread in your community. So this will be a lot of common sense actions, but it's just a reminder to families as we enter the busy season where there's a lot of events. The, the numbers for COVID are still, what we know is very low in our schools and I think that number one, a lot of our children have already had COVID in our staff last year, so, and we have a very high vaccination rate, higher than most other communities around us, particularly in our schools. We just did a vaccine clinic last week. We're planning another one for the end of the month, so we're providing a lot of opportunities for families to have access to the vaccine in our community. We are always-
Can I ask you how well-attended those were?
The vaccine clinic that we just had, according to our city health director, they had to open an additional one hundred slots. It was huge. It was very well-attended and that's why they reached out to me at the end of last week and said, can we book another one for the end of the month? To which I responded, yes. So, and I assume that that one will be well-attended as well. It's for the community. It's not just school age, but it's for the community. So we have a, and, and it's at Mountain View, so again, people like to come into Mountain View, so there's, there's a lot of senior citizens. It's, it's a great opportunity for the community. So we'll do, we'll do those whenever people want. You know, I want to, what I will say is I'm happy to convene the COVID response team and gather the expertise of folks, but there's a, there's a really careful balance, you know, right now, I walk through the schools, I, I've been in both schools this week already. And the students and the staff that want to wear masks are wearing masks. And we have a culture in which that is acceptable and it's done every single day. And people that want to do that for their own safety are taking on that responsibility. And we have masks available for anyone that needs them. That's part of our culture in the schools. And so I think it's, I think it presents an opportunity for choice. And right now, I think that people, given that choice, are being very open with us when there are cases of COVID in their homes. And they're reporting that out to us because we don't have we're not as restrictive as we were last year, so people are willingly telling us that their family member has COVID. So, you know, I, I, I think there are a lot of positive things that are happening right now. Our COVID numbers are not high. I think we had five cases in Mountain View last week, which was, which was a big week for us, you know, I mean, that were, that was a lot of cases. I think it was one staff member and four students. But there are approximately twelve hundred people in that building, between twelve and thirteen hundred people in that bill, building on a daily basis. So that, that number is relatively low for the large gathering of people that are in that building every day. The HVAC systems are good. People are really good about washing their hands and doing what they need to do. And for the most part, families are at a different place than they were before the pandemic. Staff and families take responsibility when they're not feeling well and they keep their children home or they stay home, so. I think that there have been a lot of positive things that we have going this year, and so, you know, I'm not opposed to having that committee meet. I think we can easily schedule something. I know the health director's out this week, but we can get something on the books for the next month or so, but, you know, I want to just point out that we're doing a lot of things in an appropriate manner. We're also getting free COVID tests, um, COVID tests are free. I'm, I'm not saying they're not, but we're picking up COVID tests that we're going to disseminate to anybody that wants them in the school, family, school community at Thanksgiving so that they can take a test before they come back to school and work. We'll have that available. So we're doing a lot of things.
I mean, I agree. I think it's a better year, obviously, than last year. And, I mean, it's the same in my district. But I just, I, I don't have a problem with being prepared. I just, I think it's never hurts to put our heads together and be planning while hoping that everything remains just as it is. And I think the strategies that you're using in the, the at-home tests that are going out, and I love the fact that the clinics were really over visited. I love that because the more of us that get vaccinated, the better everybody's going to be.
Yeah, I would just throw in there like, yeah, I think that we're, we are doing a lot of great things in our community. We do have a culture that's accepting of people who are wearing masks, so I think those are all really good steps. And I agree with, you know, Megan, that it's a good time also to get all of our experts together in one room to review the discrepancies between policies and put some thought towards what we need to deal with. And in case something does escalate within our community, so I, I do, uh, second, it's not exactly a motion, but I do second the, the concept of getting the team together and bringing those experts to review the policies. I think it's, it's a good time to do that now and to be proactive, so thank you very much for making that suggestion and, and your openness to that, Dr. Leclerc.
Megan, were you going to say something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it really clear that I absolutely agree, Allison, with everything that you just listed about our schools. And this would be, I lost my, my thing, my sticky password was logging in. I think the thing to really note about the, those CDC community levels is that by the time a community gets into the red, we are not talking about a caseload problem, we're talking about hospitals being full. And we're talking, so I just pulled it up so I would have the, the information here to say, we hover when we get high in Hampshire County at like eight new COVID admissions per day. If we're talking about reaching like twenty COVID admissions per day, I don't think that's likely in a county where we are so highly vaccinated, but I like this, you know, idea of having a plan, because if it does happen, what that says is that we are in crisis. And it feels to me like our responsibility to be aware of this stuff and as, you know, members of our community, if our hospitals are that full, we're talking about rationing of care, maybe explicit, maybe not explicit, but like you can't, we already are wait times of like seventeen hours. And I know that from personal experience. I broke my finger and I went to Bay State in Springfield and they told me I had to wait seventeen hours for an X-ray, which I was like, I can't do that, right? People can't do that if you're, you have, if you're, your infant who has RSV or you just got in a car accident or whatever it is. So it just feels like, you know, respect for providers who are working their butts off and making sure, like, I mean, stuff that's not COVID-related, heart attacks and car accidents and stuff, and I think the likelihood of us reaching that is not a personal community blame thing. It's a, something has gone wrong in the county and we are stressed and I would guess that it would be very short-lived. You know, a couple of weeks at maximum. My, my guess is in a place like this, it would just be curtailed pretty quickly. But it would be nice to be able to contribute, you know, be responsible in the effort to kind of lower those rates and that's where it's, so I don't want you to think that I think that there's high rates in our school or anything, and I don't want the community to think that. It's, it's really the super-high level of COVID severe COVID cases.
Good, so hopefully you can schedule that in December and you know, hopefully it will go nowhere after we meet, which is great.
Hopefully.
I'm an optimist, so.
Me too. I think that's the most likely scenario.
All right. Any other questions? Because we'll go to other. All right, so now we're in the other section and mine got taken up because I got to jump in and interrupt poor Dr. Leclerc and chime in about the open house and the PD today, so I'm done with my section. Again, I just want to say, if you could have listened to all the teachers who were so astounded by the beauty and the features and just the thought that went into the school, they were so excited and so it made my day. I was really glad I, I was a part of that. So, um, do we have another? No, that's shocking. Woo, okay.
Hold on, I'll do my P, my quick PTO. Because I really want to just keep supporting them. I know that it's a, it's like doesn't have an, a specific spot in our agenda, but it just, they are doing such great stuff. They just had that movie night at Mountain View. It went really well. It was super well-attended, like way beyond their imaginations, I think. They had to run out for more pizza. The kids had a great time. And they have more events coming, so look for like, I think there's a gingerbread night and there'll be more movie nights next, I almost called it next semester. Next, whatever you call it, year in the spring. And you can always go to their website, which is, I just pulled it up so I would have it, Mountain View, East Hampton PTO, something like that.org, and you can see what they're, what they're doing. Thank you to that group who, I know they work so hard and they're doing really great stuff for the kids. Ben?
Um, just a quick comment. I, I sat in yesterday on the Mountain View School Council Meeting and they did a little presentation on the social emotional learning program that's being enacted and it was pretty exciting to see what seems like a fantastic network of support for students where, you know, it really does seem like every student will be attended to and cared for in a more direct and deliberate way. Just seemed really great. I, I don't, I, exactly, I didn't come away knowing where to find that information online, so if, if somehow it'd be possible to promote it a little bit, so, so folks in the community who are, who are maybe feeling a little nervous about it or uncertain about it could, uh, could get some, some feedback or some information on that, that would be really great, but yeah, it was encouraging. It, it, there's some serious work going on and it's nice to see.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to our action items.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated ten twenty-six, twenty twenty-two in the amount of negative three hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second that.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, I.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChappelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzinski, I.
Like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 11/3/2022 in the amount of $585,770.74.
Second that.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
Lori Garcia, I.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChappelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 1/3/2022 in the amount of $163,702.20. And now that I just said that out loud, I'm curious if that should have been 11/3/2022. Yes. Okay. So I'm going to restate my motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 11/3/2022 in the amount of $163,702.20.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Maren Goldstein, I.
Lori Garcia, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Ben Hershey, I.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChappelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I. Great. So now we have an out-of-state trip request.
This is Tony Mango's World Language Class Group going to France next year. So this year is Costa Rica. You approved that last year. So this year you have to prove France so that they can start fundraising for that for next year. So that would be in April of 2024.
I can tell you when my daughter was in East Hampton, we went to France and I got to be a chaperone for that trip and it was a phenomenal trip. I, we still have memories, really nice memories of all the things we did. I thought it was a great experience for the kids.
All their trips are amazing.
Yes.
They go to great places.
I think it's an incredible life experience. So it's just, it's just really exciting when we can do that.
Changed my life.
So we-
I'd like to make a motion to approve that, please.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, Megan?
Very cool. Megan Harvey, I.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, I.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, I.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Ben Hershey, I.
Mayor? I think you said I. Could you try that one more time because it faded out?
Oh, Mayor LaChappelle, I.
Thank you. And Cindy Kuzensky, I. Yeah, I'm really excited. Boy, I love these trips.
We should be saying we, or C at least.
Good point. That would be cute. All right. So our next meeting dates are December 13th, 2022 for school committee. And we have an executive session that I'm going to put up for November 22nd, 2022, 2022.
What is the time on that one?
That one is going to be 4:15, correct? Dr. Leclerc, I think I was just about to-
Yes, because we have NHS induction at six.
Yep, yep, 4:15. All right. And I'll send that zoom out tonight before, before I log off. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I would like to move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, good night.
Maren Goldstein, good night.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, buenas noches.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, good night.
Ben Hershey, good night.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChappelle.
Okay, good night. And Cindy Kuzensky, good night, everybody. Stay safe. Let's keep those numbers down. All right, be well.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.